...commission meeting for the Jingdong Public Services District from Monday, April the 22nd. Uh, everybody's ready to change the estimate and the short prayer. Please be quiet. Lord, here we are again, attempting to do work for the benefit of James Island and for the PSD. Please guide us in the process of what we do tonight and your sentence being.
Amen.
Thank you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Freedom of Information Act, in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, no subject meeting and sitting will provide for all news media and persons pressing notification. Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Here.
Commissioner Engelman?
Commissioner Lawfman?
Here.
Commissioner Platt?
Here.
Commissioner Colston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, this is the time that we're gonna have any oral petitions, uh, speakers are gonna be allowed for three minutes and we're gonna use the fancy dancy, uh, new, um, timer here. So, timer?
Uh, Bill Woolsey?
Commissioners, um, I just wanted to ask that you please consider the modified memorandum of agreement and if possible, could approve that. Uh, so it's been January 28th that you all approved the original version of the memorandum of agreement and then on February 25th, there was a meeting with Chairman Lawfman, the district administrator, the county administrator, myself, C.D. Rhodes, and Michael Timms and y'all's attorney, Michael Timms, proposed that the memorandum of agreement be shortened, uh, not really changed fundamentally, that just he felt that there was more explanation than really needed to be there. And, um, so, um, also, on February 28th, he met with the auditor and everything seemed to be going really well. On February 24th, he provided a draft, a shortened draft, uh, to the participants in the meeting and I was really hoping that, um, it would come before this meeting and you all could approve the shortened draft. And I'm just asking you if you could consider that and approve that. I don't know that that's really necessary for us to move forward, that we can move forward in many parallel ways, but that's just a step that I hope that you can take. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Siebel?
This is the first time I've had to do this. Many of you know, um, a couple of years ago, I went out with a back injury. I'm still, uh, suffering from that. I was put on FMLA, which I was out for eight months. I've asked Mr. Wise several times, including late this afternoon, to change the fire department position descriptions, to remove the firefighting and job-related physical ability tests from the, the fire chiefs, because we don't fight fire, we're administrators and command officers. He's not responding to my email late this afternoon, but I thought that you guys should know that, that Chief Look and myself are both on light duty for medical reasons and we will be put out on FMLA on May 6th and May 9th. And I'm asking that you guys put on an agenda or have a meeting to where we can discuss this, because this is a time that the fire chief and the deputy fire chief of operations do not need to be out. We need to be here working and doing our jobs. There's nothing keeping us from doing our duties administratively or at command. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else sign?
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
May 6th and May 9th.
That's when we're out. Yes, sir.
So, um, yeah, that's okay. May 6th and May 9th, that's not too far, so we, we need to do something.
Okay, we go.
Okay.
Okay, we move into the approval of minutes. Um, first would be the administrative committee meeting from March 25th. Do I hear motion to approve? So move.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Do we need to have a roll call for approval of these or should we just do it? We do need that, right? We did say we needed to have it. Okay.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawfman?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Colston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, the regular commission meeting of the 25th. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. That's right.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Colston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, the CIP workshop from the 8th. Okay, do I hear motion? You want to do it again? Okay. Say, so move, send somebody else to the top.
Second.
Discussion?
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Colston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Uh, okay, the special commission meeting for the 8th. Do I hear motion? So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Right.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawfman?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Colston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Last one, the 8th meeting, the 8th, uh, 11th. Very much.
So move. Second.
Okay, discussion?
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawfman?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Colston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Wise, the management report.
Yes, thank you. Um, I've got a couple of items I'd like to speak to. Uh, one is the update of the pump station number two force main project. Uh, this is more just an operational statement, which may, Mr. Offlin, in the audience, just in case, I can't answer all the questions, but, uh, I have, uh, some documents here. One's a synopsis of the program and the other is a timeline of the program and how long it takes. Um, so if you'll take one of each and pass it around, yeah, one of the covered. I know that you all have been presented with this information before, the entire project was vetted and then approved and everything else, but, um, I spoke with Mr. Lawfman and he felt like, you know, another update would be necessary, so I just thought I'd give you the actual synopsis so that you're just prepared. Um, it's pretty straightforward what we're doing. We're running from Central Park all the way down to the pump station one and two, I mean, one, um, and that will feed into, of course, the treatment plant and this is, uh, capacity issue and a age issue and it's all been approved. Tonight, we do have, uh, Mr. Howell here to talk to you about one of the requirements of the SRF loan. Um, our efforts are gonna be, uh, twofold. One is obviously to try to keep you informed of the progress, but also to ensure that the public knows when we have road closures, we use our standard process of getting it out on the website, we'll also use social media, uh, but all three of the social medias, we will have mapping to show if there's a route alternative. Fortunately, uh, correct me, Mr. Offlin, I would say 95% of this project is underground and it's limited road closures, uh, throughout the process and maybe when you're putting in the pit for the drilling.
Most of, yeah, most of that's just gonna be when we have to string out the pipe, pull the pipe in.
Right.
That's when we usually have to close the road off to do that.
So, we're not doing open cut here, so that's one of the factors.
Not, not on Central Park.
Right.
We will once we get to the apartment complex.
But that'll be inside the session, so it won't be a real. So, if, if you all, you know, wanna read this and, and ask me some email questions or, or days here too, we can go over it, but as I said, we've already done pretty much a full presentation on this a couple of times, but this is just to have at your fingertips.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew the Central Park process had already started.
Right.
A lot of the getting questions.
But the timeline can be adjusted, obviously, because of weather, but I think that's, so, I've got some extra copies if you want, uh, somebody to take with them, give to someone else, it's fine.
In the future, I hope that, um, whatever information that any, I saw it would be before, um, the meeting, because, um, although I know about this project, it would be nice to update that I could have, um, done this at home and know exactly what's going on. So please, um, try to give these to us before the day of the meeting, because it just, it makes things easier for us, for me, I think. Mr. Wise, thanks.
Sure. Um, also wanted to touch back on the budget calendar. I think there was a little confusion, uh, and I wanted to see if we're all still on the same page. You all were given a budget calendar, um, before and I think we sent one in the package today.
Yes.
Okay, let me double check that. Just wanna reference three dates. Um, the 5th, 6th is the revenue and expense workshop for the commission. We're working on that right now with the management team, trying to get a, a good handle on that, so that's just an educational thing again. When you see the word all mandatory, we're not speaking about your, your folks, it's, uh, it's basically our staff, it's all mandatory to attend. Then the official 513, um, Ways and Means Budget Committee, uh, Budget Workshop is the one where we do the full presentation of the budget and, uh, answer any questions and then at that point, if there's anything that you feel like you still need answers to, you could ask us and we'll strike it back to you. And right now, the first reading is, uh, assigned to the 20th commission meeting, which has been moved up because of the holiday on the 27th, right, that we've all agreed to, or you all agreed to that. And then, uh, we have to advertise, of course, 15 days prior to a public hearing, which occurs on the 6th, 24th, 19th, and then the full commission, second reading and final approval. So, I just wanted to remind you of all those dates that we had previously discussed.
The 6th, the 13th, and the 20th.
Be very busy next one. 7 o'clock, as requested, unless somebody wants to do it.
Everybody got it?
Okay. Um, just wanted to point out a couple of good things on the numbers. We have, uh, I think, improved, uh, in the, uh, street name signs repairing and we're up to date currently, that's why we see a reduction in that, um, service, because we cleaned so many and repaired so many, we're not getting as many requests, so that's, that's a positive thing. Our collections, um, our, our disconnects and reconnects have dropped dramatically and that's because of the fine efforts of the folks up front, Joanne, I think you're in here, and, and her staff. When they work the collections very hard, then that tends to reduce the disconnects and collections by phone calling them, uh, trying to get them to come in and make some kind of payment plan or whatever else, so they don't fall onto that disconnect and reconnect, uh, plan. So, um, the other thing was, uh, the, uh, budget overtime in the fleet, uh, is under budget by 27%, so they're doing a really good job there. And last, Chief, since you're here, could you, you noted the, I was gonna ask you this, but to get a chance, children's charity collections, you did that last month, was it?
We did.
How much did we get?
A little over a thousand.
And how does that compare to last year?
About the same.
About the same?
How much was the chief?
Just over a thousand dollars.
Yeah, we, we used to run a real big tab, but unfortunately.
Seventeen to twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Since we stopped being able to collect in the street, it's just too dangerous, camping falling is not a good place to stand out in the middle of the rain.
But that's still money to them and that's still, uh, an effort on your, your personnel's part and thank you, appreciate that, so I just wanted to point that out. So that's my report.
I wonder if anybody reported, but the entrance to, uh, White House Point, somebody ran into that street sign the other night.
Okay, David, have you gotten that reported to you?
No, sir.
Yeah, nobody's reported it. Well, it's.
Okay.
Bad shit.
We'll take a look at it.
What is that White House building?
Yeah.
Most likely.
Right, right, the church, is this way?
Somebody went around that curb too fast.
Uh, that's, that's been many times, unfortunately. All right, that, that's it for me unless.
Well, actually, that's, that part of it is, is to do. How about, uh, the SRF loan?
Sure. Um, as I mentioned before, uh, our bond attorney, Sam Howell, is here, but I'd like James to speak to this briefly before we introduce him. Uh, this is basically a requirement of the SRF folks, uh, it's the, uh, fourth supplemental resolution, necessary, we've done this in the past, this is not unusual, but we thought it would be really nice to have James introduce Sam and start, excuse me, Mr. Howell, and have him tell us about how this for the purpose of this.
Well, I'm still Sam's friend, so I'll just introduce Sam Howell, who's our bond attorney, our group bond attorney, does all our closings on the SRF loan. Mr. Howell, go explain what we're doing and while we're doing this.
All right. Thank you. Jim, this is, excuse my voice, I, I don't know why, I was a toddler, my wife's lying about it, but other than that, I can't hardly talk.
Well, we can offer you some water and help a little bit?
I've got a cough drop, that's somebody helping you right now, but thank you.
Allergens have been terrible for me, so I understand.
All right, well, I'll try to get here, please let me know, but, all right, so what, back in 2014, the, um, the commission, commissioners adopted a general bond resolution. And what that document did was provided the general parameters of when the PSD would borrow money to finance improvements to the sewer system. And, and, um, as Mr. Wise said, you know, described the project, the, uh, just about a few moments ago, that's the current project to be financed by PSD. Um, the, um, PSD has several options about ways to borrow money, you can go to a bank and borrow money, it can issue bonds in the public bond market, or it can go to a state or federal agency that lends money to, for projects like this. And in this case, it's going to the state, um, uh, revolving fund loan, um, for that source of funds, which is a, um, a relatively inexpensive, uh, low interest rate, longer-term kind of a loan, that you can normally get at a bank, and less expensive than a public bond issue. And the, um, as Mr. Wise says, the, the PSD has done that before, um, so in this case, there's a six point, roughly $6.7 million loan, we take it out, payable back from sewer system revenues, um, the money we use for the project that Mr. Wise described, the, the four supplemental resolutions before you tonight, and supplemental resolution provides the details of particular borrowing that PSD is gonna do, in this case, for that project. And it essentially just approves, entering, authorizing the chairman to sign and deliver a loan agreement, a promissory note on behalf of the PSD, uh, to, um, to get the loan from the state revolving fund. And, um, when that closes in the next, um, probably four to six weeks, then that money will be available in, in your bank account to, um, to use to pay costs of this project. I'll be glad to, you know, answer any questions that I can, if you have those.
Okay, any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So early. Why do we approve that?
It's just, this is the next step of the approval.
Right, it's a resolution.
This is the waiting for it.
For the commission.
I agree.
You, you made motion to.
Well, I second.
Okay.
It's a resolution. Explain.
Okay, any, any discussion or one question?
Much to make the resolution.
Yes, sir.
Um, will the, will they repay entirely from, uh, which one of these?
The, the bond goes into that, that account and then, uh, they pay it and they come back out of it.
It'll be a debt.
Right.
They'll be paying monthly payment based on the rest.
Yes, sir.
So, um, let me ask a question on why, um, so we're getting, um, bonds is, um, less interest rate?
The SRF loans.
Okay, um, let me explain actually, explain why we, um, choosing a bond over a bank.
I think the primary reason is that most banks will not go out very long term, uh, relatively, they'll go at a fixed interest rate of maybe seven, six, seven, eight years, something like that. This project, first of all, has a useful life of 30 years and so one thing is a question of, is it fair or not to burden the current rate payers, pay for something that people will be using for 20, 30 years down the road. The second one, which is probably the more important one, is that by paying over that period of time, the, the annual payments, the monthly payments are a lot less, a lot lower than if you tried to pay it all off in about six or seven years. And so, um, that is typically why you do it, the, the state, and there's some federal programs too like this, they're able to offer lower interest rates also than the banks can offer too, so, all the way around, if your project qualifies, and this does for the state revolving fund loan program, it's, it's usually a very, um, very efficient way to borrow money, they kind of fits in with the, the useful life of the assets and keeps interest rates down, the costs of transaction are also lower, as opposed to a, either a bank loan or a bond issued sold to public.
And, uh, if I, if I read this correctly, it's also got governmental guarantees behind it?
No, it does not have that, it's, I mean, the money comes from the state government, who gets it from the federal government, but these bonds are payable by, as Mr. Wise said, from sewer, uh, system revenues, from the, from PSD.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, uh, this one? Uh, this is a motion for approval of the, the next step on the, uh, with the FSR.
Why don't you just say the motion for approval for supplemental resolution? Yes, I have it.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Colston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number seven, too. Thank you, Mr. Howell, appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Incidentally, I was just reading something in, you know, the Health magazine the other day, they say that if you have a cough drop, just let the chocolate slide down, it'll be easier on the throat.
Unlike the.
Okay, uh.
Yes, uh, I'd like to, uh, first, uh, give you all a little insight, this wastewater rate study is extensive, it's well done, uh, this is a new group with us, we're pleased with what they've done, the modeling programs are excellent, um, these are just a recommendation, we are not stating that this will be what we'll be doing, because normally, we look at the rate study and pull that into the budget process, um, and that's when the decision will be made, whether the rates are increased or not. Tonight is just a representation of what is possibly what we may need in the future. Uh, and so, we're not asking for any approval or anything, this is almost like another workshop for information for you all to, to be informed on how rate study operates and, um, the tradition of that, so, James, would you like?
All right. To expand a little further, a lot of work went into this by Darryl Parker, Principal Consultant at Willdan, Doyer, and Michael Crumman, but a lot of work in, went into in the district to get that stuff, we're ready, led by Mr. Wise, but Joanne Tucker did a lot of work and her staff, myself and David Offlin. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Parker.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, as you heard, I'm Darryl Parker with, uh, Willdan Financial Services and, um, and first off, I, I wanna thank you guys for actually selecting us to, to do this project. I know this is a very important project for the district and it's been a while, as you're gonna see, since you've had a comprehensive study done, so, uh, we're happy to help. Um, one, one of the things that you heard is, uh, what a good job your staff did, well, I'm, I'm telling you, they did a good job in getting us data. Uh, this was a very, um, compressed timeframe and we could not have gotten it done as quickly as we did without the help of James and Joanne and David, Mr. Wise, so we had, uh, had great support from your internal group and, uh, much appreciated.
So we don't owe you anything, thank you for that.
Uh, you will, you'd be surprised, that's, that's not always the case. Oftentimes, we're asked to, uh, to, to do things very, very quickly without any information and, uh, but, uh, with, with staff support, we were able to get this accomplished. So, and I, I do wanna say, this is meant to be very informal, I mean, I'm gonna really kind of approach this from an educational standpoint and let you guys know what we've done and, and kind of where, where we are and what the results are, but stop me anytime, raise your hand with any questions and, um, we'll be happy to answer anything you need. And, uh, Michael's here with me, Michael is, uh, if, if you've got any detail, Michael is the one that's developed the fancy spreadsheet model that, uh, that, that you won't see here, but, uh, you'll probably see it at some point, uh, 'cause once everything's done, we'll pass that on to staff and he'll be happy to, you know, walk you through anything you need and that. He's still five minutes. I wasn't sure. So, all right, well, we'll get moving. You want Michael to hand these out?
Yes, please.
Oh, I forgot about the handouts, yeah.
These are, they are the copy of the present, so.
Oh, long.
I'll leave this here.
No, you're fine.
No, I understand, is that okay?
Whoever's most comfortable.
Oh, okay. You can say five, can I have? Okay, all right, good. That was a good call.
I like my name.
The, uh, as you guys may know, the, the pointer works great, but not on the TV screen, so, so I'll probably be walking up here. Um, so anyway, you've heard a little bit about, kind of, what's driving the need for the, for the rate study, it has been a while since your last comprehensive study, uh, it's good to do these every so often. Um, the financial needs, really, that's kind of what's driving what we're, what we're gonna be talking about tonight. You've had, uh, increasing operating costs, just like any other utility system. Uh, you heard about the new state revolving fund loan, that's the new debt, uh, so we've gotta take that into consideration. One of the things that, that we're doing here is we're not looking at just this upcoming budget year, we, we're looking at a five-year plan, 'cause we wanna factor in that new debt, we wanna factor in other capital projects that you're gonna need to fund. Uh, and one of the big things driving this is, we wanted, we heard, uh, from staff that you need to build some reserves for future capital needs, and so those are kind of our, our overall, um, goals as, as we move through the study. So, our objectives when, when we're doing a study like this, obviously, the, our, our main objective is full cost recovery. We don't wanna recommend any rates that are not gonna generate enough revenues to meet your expenditure needs, so that's our, our primary, uh, goal. Cost-based rate structure, we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. Equity, uh, we wanna make sure that, you know, different customer classes are, are not, uh, overburdened, uh, or, or being supported by other customer classes. Administrative efficiency, that's just a fancy way of saying the rate should be easy to understand by the customers and, and easy to implement by staff. Five-year financial plan I mentioned, uh, one of the things that we're gonna talk about, some of the things that we're throwing out for consideration are, are really more for industry standards, not necessarily for, for financial needs, this sir.
Your question after the full cost recovery, um, is there a timeframe attached to that or is it supposed to be five year?
Well, yeah, what, what we're looking at, when we say full cost recovery, whatever rates that we're suggesting you put in and, and next year, the year after, the year after that, that those are meeting your expenditure needs during those years. There's just kind of a, a visual, uh, you know, we've got basically our revenues, part of our analysis, we looked at, at customer data, we looked at, uh, usage of the wastewater flows, or we kind of do a, a revenue test to, to make sure that, uh, that the data, uh, when applied to the rates, gets us at least pretty close to the reported revenues from your financial reports, so that tells us what kind of revenue we're gonna generate under the existing rates. You've got other revenues, miscellaneous service charges, uh, interest earnings, that kind of thing, so.
Can be added, so perhaps that would be something good update for the public services.
Yeah, well, you know, it's not a secret or keep it from anybody.
Yeah, and we need to be careful talking about somebody else's services and programs.
No, that's information. And if you put that information out, the customer need to know about new information. It's new to me, and so I think that we have a responsibility to get information out to the customers.
It's complex.
And we can do it by news. We need to let the customer know. If you don't want to let the customer know, don't say it in a public meeting.
Well, all right. We can discuss it later on, but it seems like an easy thing to do. We put the ball where it's supposed to be. We put it, we put it to a note that says, if you have an interest in having it separated on that, contact CWS. It is not a PSD function. It has to be approved by the CWS rather than through PSD.
Okay.
We can put it out as a notice, but we don't have the authority or responsibility.
All that's many is information. People just need information. Information is power. Okay?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is what your current rates look like. We mentioned base charge. You've got the general service seventeen oh five per month, and then non-meter, basically, customers that you don't have any way to know how much flow there are, so you're not billing them based on volumetric rate. You're billing them by what we call a big C amount. And it assumes the base charge plus, I think, six units of flow. So that captures those general service customers, and then their volumetric rate is currently five oh two. And we mentioned the cap on residential, and it's only on residential. Commercial customers don't get a cap. But typically, they're not using any service for nondiscretionary purposes. They're typically not irrigating. They're not washing cars. They're in business. And if they're using water and sewer service, they're using it for their business purpose. You've got a CWS transportation rate, and then you've got your folly beach wholesale rate, which is also a base charge and a volumetric. One of the things that we'll talk about is the folly beach rate has been in place a long time, hadn't been adjusted in a while. Not necessarily sure how it originated, but it's probably something that shouldn't just stay stagnant. And so we'll talk about that when we get to what we're proposing for you. Financially, as I mentioned, we take those rates and apply them to the customers and come up with our revenues, and then we apply those to the expenses. These are your current draft budget numbers for the upcoming fiscal year. So fiscal 2020, which will begin July 1 of fiscal 19. So we're saying, okay, right now, if you don't do anything, your revenues are going to be a little bit short of the expenses. It's not horrible. I've seen way worse, but it's at least in the ballpark. So a little bit different. This is one thing that would kind of concern us. Debt service coverage is a financial indicator of the strength of the utility system. It's basically this revenue, total revenue, minus this operating expense divided by the debt service amount. Your resolution is going to require that this number be at least one point two zero. Based on the current projection, it's right in that range, maybe a little bit low. But if you're right there at the one point two range, that's not necessarily showing strength. That's just showing you're just making it. You're making what you have to. What we would like to see from your consultant's standpoint is a little more financial viability there. And so some of the things that we're proposing from a rate standpoint are to improve this coverage number. If you were, you get rated, your ratings from Moody's and S and P. If you were getting an updated rating, they wouldn't like this. They'd say you need to improve on that. So that's kind of where we're coming from on that as well.
Where does the S and P become where they do like it instead of they don't like it?
Usually, I mean, they like to see at least about one point five. A lot of utilities might put in their own target of two, two times. But obviously, you've got to set rates that will generate that level of revenue. That may not be your goal. And, you know, we're, part of this is, you know, this is a higher debt service number than last year.
And this is if we don't do anything at all.
Right, right. And like I said, this is not a terrible rate. It's just, you know, based on our projections, kind of where you would be. And Michael can tell you, we oftentimes see way worse. More often than not, we do. That's why they've even asked us to help them out. So here's some things. I told you we're kind of going to put some things out for consideration. It's really, some of these are just structural changes. One of the things that you might want to consider is for that base charge, that's seventeen oh five. Right now, it's the same for all your customers. What we typically see in the industry is an incremented fee that's higher for larger meter sizes. You guys have no control over those meters, but you do have the sewer side of that. So the larger, the water meter, I mean, just by the nature of this industry, the more potential impact a customer can put on your sewer system because it's those direct functional relationship. So what we would suggest that you might consider is, and I'll show you, I think it'll make a little more sense when you see the numbers, but that's just kind of structurally what we would like to see you do. And if we're going to do something like that, we would suggest a five-year phase-in because we don't want customers all of a sudden being slammed, you know, with a bill that they've never seen before. Because when we're doing something like this, it's not necessarily for more revenue. It'll generate more revenue, but that's not the purpose. It's really more for that equity that we talked about and industry consistency.
Is this a physical change in the meter size?
No, no, no. You wouldn't change the meter size. Like I said, you have no control over that. But you have sewer customers that have water meters that are larger than the standard residential. And Charleston Water System, they bill their water customers by the size of the meter too, so you'd actually kind of be more consistent with what they do as well. So.
Could you elaborate on that?
We'll see.
One would think that, you know, if a meter is actively measuring the flow, whether it's a huge meter or a small meter, it'll make a difference, so.
Oh, it's not, it's not a matter of measuring. It's a matter of potential demand on your system. That larger connection, you've got to have facilities in place, larger lines and stuff, in order to accept that demand, that potential demand that they place on your system.
So in fact, they pay in advance?
It's not really paying in advance. It's just, it's what we call availability of service. So you're, that's what kind of that base charge is, is you're paying monthly an availability of service fee so that the utility is there and ready to provide that service.
So it's paying in advance, but different terms than what she prefers to use. Okay. That's fine.
Okay. But yeah, it's not, because it's not like an impact fee, like you're paying a capital fee in advance. This is the monthly rate, the monthly service fee. Your volumetric rate, nothing really to change there. One of the things that we talk about with staff, and I mentioned that fourteen hundred cubic feet or fourteen CCF is pretty low. We typically see that number more in the twelve thousand to fifteen thousand range per month, which is twelve thousand would be right at the sixteen hundred cubic feet. So, we would suggest that you increase that number from fourteen to sixteen. What that will do is, here again, it gets it more in line with industry standards. It'll actually generate a little additional revenue. Not huge, because we're not making that big of a change, but it will generate more revenue because that cap is going to be a little bit higher. So here again, something to consider.
So these are options. These are the options that you can, that they can do to increase?
Well, yeah, this is really, as I mentioned, most of this stuff is really just to kind of be consistent with what the rest of the industry is doing in this region and nationally too. But, I mean, we know you care more about what's going on in South Carolina and in the southeast region. You don't care what they're doing in Wyoming.
They really don't.
We get that.
We don't care what they're doing in California.
None of us care what they're doing in California, personally. We've got offices out there.
So increased residential cap by approximately fourteen percent.
From fourteen to sixteen.
From fourteen to sixteen. That could be fourteen percent. I don't know. It doesn't matter.
Fourteen to sixteen would give us some more money.
So I, you know, I mentioned kind of the meter size thing. Most of your residential customers, almost all of them are going to be the standard meter size. You might have some that are in this one inch range. All we're doing here is, right now, I told you, it's seventeen oh five for everybody. So no matter what size connection you are, that's a factor of one. All we're suggesting is that you follow what we call the AWWA, which is American Water Works Association Factors, which is kind of the industry guideline for this type of analysis. And with Water Environment Federation, which is also this, kind of the wastewater side, the all side of AWWA, they use the same, same basic methodology. So all we're saying is, you know, whatever, and you'll see the numbers here in a minute, whatever this rate is, that next meter size, that rate should be two and a half times that, and five times, and so forth. And these numbers, kind of, it's not that what you're doing is wrong. It's just, this would, this would be an adjustment just to get you more in line with what the rest of the industry is doing. And so, and these numbers come right out of the AWWA manuals, so they're legally defensible. If we're asked, well, why is, you know, one connection size this times this much more than the other, well, we pull it right out of the manuals. These are based on engineering studies of how much water can go through the next larger meter. And so it's based on physics. That doesn't change. So we like using that as a guideline.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Give, tell me, why are we doing this rate study? What is the main purpose? Are you here presenting this to us? I want to hear you.
The main purpose?
Yeah.
Is really to take that comprehensive look at your rates, make sure that we're going to generate enough revenues. A lot of what's driving this, as we've mentioned earlier, you do have increasing expenses. You've got the new debt service that we've got to make sure we recover. And you've got other capital needs even beyond that, based on your capital improvements program.
So you're here to prove to us that what we're doing is generating enough income that we need to increase?
Well, as we saw, it's close. I mean, it's not, it's not that you're far off. But we're looking at not just the dollar amounts, but also kind of the structure and the industry consistency as well. And what I'm here to tell you is not that you have to do this, just that based on our analysis, this is what we'd suggest.
So when you say a few years, how long has it been since the last study?
What was that, two thousand sixteen? Sixteen? So I think the last really comprehensive one was maybe more like 2011 or something. It seemed like it was a while back. So, but, so, so you've probably never seen any of this before, I'm guessing. Because I'm assuming your last consultant didn't suggest this, and maybe they did, and just never got adopted. It's, you know, here again, it's not a matter that what you're doing is wrong, but there's some things that could be done, let's say, more right than that would be.
It was never recommended by our last.
Oh, okay.
That's what?
Was never recommended this period.
Everything I'm seeing anyway is standard line is five eighth to three quarter. So so far, I'm not seeing any change to the standard residential.
It doesn't really impact the residential.
Other than changing from fourteen CCF to sixteen.
Yes, sir. Right.
That's the only increase that I'm seeing.
Advantage is they don't have to pay for that.
Right.
When we start doing something like this, it doesn't impact your residential customers. It impacts the commercial.
The commercial?
Yes.
So the car wash would be really appealing?
Ah, they might, yeah. I don't know what size connection they would have, but yeah, I would expect they probably got a decent size connection. And well, here, I'll tell you what. Let's go ahead and look at the numbers right now. So this is just showing you the phasing. We won't spend a lot of time on that, but I just mentioned if we're going to do it, let's do it based on a five-year plan, where we go from not having any difference to getting out here to these factors that we saw in the previous one. But let's do it over time.
So the top line is the average residential?
Yeah, this is that base charge. Right now, everybody pays seventeen oh five. We're looking at a little bit of an increase anyway. Just, as we mentioned, you're a little bit short on revenue, got new debt service coming, so we're proposing a bump up in that rate anyway. But now these other customers, these larger connections, they're going to be higher than this one now. And then so as, as our number here for our residential phases up, then once we get out here, these numbers are exactly based on these factors. So here again, it's not that we're suggesting this for additional revenue. It will generate additional revenue, but you don't have really that many customers that are in these larger meter sizes. So it's, it's really more to just kind of get you guys where the industry is.
Excuse me, ma'am. Five eighths and three quarter inch, we have seven thousand customers. Those are mostly residential. The one inch all the way up to the six inch is a max of two hundred and fifty. Probably the less customers on that.
Just out of curiosity, how many six inch do we have?
Five. And those may not be all our customers. Joey Young's going to work on that to identify those, but three to five.
That's what, see, that's what I think they've been here this one.
Right.
And that's their meters now.
So we know that's our.
And the car washes are in the city of Charleston.
Yeah, majority is. The majority is right there in three, three quarter inch.
So what they gave us was Georgetown as a whole, not, not.
Right. We've gone through most of that, but not all of that.
Not by a huge amount.
And this is not one of those things that you've got to have in place by July 1. I mean, if it takes, you know, some, you know, working with staff to make sure that, you know, we know who everybody is, where everybody is, yeah, that's fine. I mean, because we've not assumed additional revenues from this in our analysis. We've assumed the structure all the way through. So, so there's some conservatism built in there. So, and I don't really even know if we've talked about that. I mean, if you guys want to go to something like this, it doesn't have to be done day one. I mean, it can be something that even you wait till next year or something. I'm just kind of throwing it out that this is, this is what the rest of the industry is doing.
And it's our choice whether we accept it or reject it.
Of course, yes, ma'am.
And, but however, what I'm looking at here is this rate study is showing that people's sewer bill is going to be increasing.
It will.
And it's no decrease in the sewer bill. This is, we're looking at, there's going to be an increase, and there's no getting around that. That's what it is. And let's call the spade the spade.
Yeah, so beat increases, yes, ma'am. And we'll see that. In fact, we've probably beaten this one up enough. So, you know, this, like I said, more of a suggestion than expectation. So this is what the new rates would look like. We saw that the seventeen oh five went seventeen fifty one, and then the other rates adjust accordingly. We did suggest that you bump up the folly beach by three percent. We hadn't touched it in a long time. Not necessarily a cost-based adjustment, more of an inflationary-based adjustment. I mean, your costs are going up, so their rate should go up to kind of match that.
And they're building bigger houses too.
And that's, that's information that we can't see in the data. So you guys know that, and that's good information, obviously. We mentioned that we suggest going to sixteen hundred cubic feet on the, on the cap, so. We mentioned we looked at historical customer information. We did some projections. We try to be somewhat conservative on our projections for customers. But you're growing, and that's a good sign. If by chance, you know, two or three years from now, you've got some growth that we haven't factored in or that it's becoming even better. So that's, that's kind of, but, you know, you've also got to look at the capital side of that as well. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. So the comparison, I know this is what, kind of what we were asking about. These are, you know, various customers at different levels of flow, what their new sewer bill would be this upcoming year. Most of your customers are going to fall in this highlighted range right here. So they're typically going to see, you know, around a dollar fifty a month increase. The, kind of the industry comparison number is this eight hundred. You guys are a little bit lower than that on average, but you'll see this again in some upcoming slides. It's just a visual of that. Obviously, one thing that we should probably point out is, as you use more flow, your increase is more. So basically, the higher users are getting impacted more than the lower users. Visual of that. Now, how does this compare to other utilities in the area? So we did a comparison for you. I highlighted these. It's, you know, your direct neighbors, folly beach and Charleston Water System. You guys are already lower than them. You're on this, on this graph, and this is the eight hundred cubic feet I mentioned, you guys basically are just not even jumping over anybody. You're just kind of sliding your bar over. You're still below the average, and there's a good chance that these other utility systems are going to raise their rates July 1 as well. So you may not even, that the average is probably going to move up. It may not be that much different than where you are now. And Ms. Crouch, you mentioned, you know, what's going to happen? Is it going to keep going up? Based on our projections, it will need to. Here again, you've got the new debt service coming on. You've got other capital expenditures. But this is a pretty manageable trend, we think, from our standpoint, from what we see from other utilities. These are, weren't these like in the three and a half, four percent range?
Yeah.
Michael, Michael did all this math, so. Which is really kind of consistent with even just your increasing operating expenses. So you're not, you're not really hitting anybody, you know, hard. We're just basically kind of managing those adjustments, managing that, those expenditures and those capital needs. We have the, kind of the dollars that are, that we're going to look at, that we're projecting here. As we mentioned, under the existing rates, you're going to come up a little bit short. Under the proposed rates that we've got in here, this debt service coverage number we mentioned, it's obviously looking a lot better. But what you're going to see, as I mentioned, this number, and these are the same, obviously, because these are the same fiscal year, it's higher than it was last year. But as that new debt comes on, it's still going up. You've got up here again, other capital needs. You're probably going to have other debt. So that's what we're seeing going on there. So that's why this trend is happening, because primarily, it's driven by that capital and that debt. So here's the percentage amounts that we were looking at. But, so this is still pretty good. I mean, this is right in there where we want it to be. It's, it's close enough to the one point five. Eventually, this debt number will level off. And so if we were looking at this over a ten-year period, then maybe we see that debt number level up, and then the adjustments are not quite as, quite as much to get to the coverage.
And the district's pro-life policy is one point five.
So your policy is one point five? Okay, so if nothing else, your policy drives you off of this, because this is not getting you there.
We get by with the one point two zero based on the loans.
Yeah, that's the minimum. Yeah.
Right. But that's not.
Yeah, that's not strong. Right. So, and here again, I mean, you know, these are, these are all projections. You know, if the revenue numbers are what we're projecting and the expense numbers are a little bit less, then these coverage numbers are better in future years. But this is what we consider a pretty, pretty manageable plan. This is just the graphical illustration of these numbers right here, the bottom line. And then one of the things that we thought was really good here is your reserve fund balances. We mentioned, you know, we kind of want to build those up a little bit. So this plan does that. This, what we call the target number here, is just calculated to six months of your O and M expenses, which is kind of a, kind of a minimum that you'd want to maintain. So we're, we've basically set the cost of service model up to get us at least to that target level, and obviously, a little bit higher in some years. So we're meeting the objectives that we talked about earlier. We're, you know, building up those reserves, doing much better on coverage, and not severely impacting any of your customers. So that was our ultimate goal. We'll talk about the impact fees in a minute, but before we go there, do we have any questions on the financial projections or the rates? And remember, you're not being asked to act on anything tonight.
Right.
This is really more for your information.
But it's just information given us.
Yep.
It's pretty good.
I would expect at some point you're going to be asked to act on, which is not tonight.
I'm not ready tonight.
The only thing I'm seeing is this is being added to the salary studies, being added to all the other studies, and the fact that we're living in the past as far as projecting our expenses and income for the future. So everybody's been tooting the horns about no tax increases for ever and ever, and it's coming back to midas now.
Who's fault is that? But we're not talking about a tax increase.
No, I'm just saying that all of our expenses and revenues and everything have not adjusted to what the current cost of living for all of the things that we're doing have not been adjusted upward.
Who's fault is that?
The commission.
Williams, somebody?
The commission.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, as we saw, I mean, it's not like you're in any dire financial situation now.
Correct.
So, so, yeah, I wouldn't be too hard on yourselves, because it could be definitely a, I mean, we see a lot worse situations, so, which I've mentioned earlier. So now the other part of the study is the impact fees, and those haven't been looked at in a while either. Basically, the impact fees in South Carolina are kind of directed by the state statutes, section six of article nine. So whenever we're doing impact fee studies, you know, we make sure we stay within those guidelines. They're, they're pretty flexible. And so, you know, there's not, when I say stay within the guidelines, it's not, you know, that it's so rigid, but it's, we want to make sure we're consistent with the law, though. So what an impact fee is, is that one-time fee that any new customer, new or future customer is going to pay to connect to your system. It recovers capital costs for making that capacity available, basically. And really, the good thing about it is it helps that growth pay for itself. We saw that we're still projecting some customer growth. We're incurring, you're incurring capital costs because you need to provide more service, so these customers need to help pay for that. Because it does protect your existing customers. Your existing customers obviously don't pay it. They probably already did at some point, but they're not going to pay anything that you've changed. They're not paying any of that. But what it does is it helps them not have to pay for that other capital that you're spending for growth.
What you're saying, what is it now, our impact fee? What is the cost?
You're way ahead of me. We'll get there pretty quick, actually. And in fact, I'll show you real quick what it is right now. So right now, it's eight hundred and five dollars per equivalent residential unit. An equivalent residential unit is your standard measure for one, like the typical residential customer. And I'll show you how we get there in a second. But, so, and what we did, which we're ahead right now, based on calculated capital numbers, you could push that number as high up as what we've calculated at twelve hundred and ten dollars. Here again, that's not necessarily a proposal. It's just throwing that out for information, that your eight hundred and five probably isn't collecting as much as it should. So if you wanted to either increase it to that or to somewhere in between, you've got the capacity to do that. So I'll go back real quick and talk about where the numbers come from. So. So we've got, what, as I mentioned, what this fee is, is to recover the cost of capital. So your capital items are out there, and this information is consistent with your audited financial statements. So you've got the different system components. We've got the original cost, we've got net book value, and then we've got what we call replacement. Excuse me, replacement cost, new less appreciation, RC and OT. Sorry. And so basically, what we're doing here is adjusting those capital numbers to today's dollars, is what that does, because you want the customers to pay the value, the current value of the system. You've also got your capital improvements program, we mentioned, almost fifteen million dollars in capital projects over the next five year period. So we want to include that in there as well, which the state allows. So we've got total, what we call recoverable costs. So we're looking at this column out here, which is the value of the system, sixty-five. And then, here, it's kind of condensed, but we make some adjustments here, because we can't just charge, we can't just collect that, because what happens is you've got some debt service that is funded in some of these facilities, like the SRF we're talking about, and that debt service is paid through the user rates. So we want to back out that debt, so we're not double recovering on that. You've also got some capital that was funded with grants. That was not money that was incurred by the utility. So we factor that out, because that was basically free, so we can't recover that again. And assets that were developed, that were basically contributed by the developer after construction was done on those facilities. So we back out all that, and so that nets us down to just over twenty-four million. And then we divided that. We mentioned this is an equivalent residential unit number per ERU. Based on the math here, you've got a four MGD ownership, or at least available capacity in the water, excuse me, sewer treatment plant. And so at an assumed six thousand gallons per month per ERU, which is a typical residential customer. Six thousand is kind of an industry standard, and so that calculates down to twenty thousand ERUs. So we divide that number into our adjusted asset number, and that's where the twelve hundred and ten comes from.
What's MCD?
Oh, a million gallons per day. Sorry about that, I should have. And so here, we've seen this, the comparison of those two numbers. And this methodology is consistent with the way you've done it in the past. Really, the only thing different is the inclusion of this capital number, because the last study didn't include that. But the state allows it, so you've got to fund those projects, so this will help us fund those projects. So here again, we're not saying that you need to do this, but if by chance you want to raise that fee, this is something that if it was challenged, we'd be able to support you on that. We'd say, yeah, twelve hundred dollars covers their capital costs. So that's kind of the end of our presentation. Obviously, the rate adjustments that we talked about, and we've already addressed this. You had just your ongoing operating expenses going up, your new debt service, other capital improvements. I mean, costs that you guys have no control over, energy costs, fuel costs, chemical costs. Those things go up pretty much every year. And that impacts, your personnel costs go up. You get raises, you get additional staff, that kind of thing. So we've just thrown in here, you know, it's, you're kind of going a number of years between studies. You may want to consider either an annual or biannual look, just to make sure you're still on track, especially since you guys are growing, and you do have new debt coming on. And I have two kids in college, and that's how I get paid. So anyway, so that's the last slide. Any questions? We can go back to anything you want to address, or if you've got anything that you didn't address.
So you're just saying monitor this yearly, as opposed to letting a couple of years cycle through, and then...
A lot of our clients do, yeah, just, especially during the budget process, just to kind of make sure that it's on track. And also, you know, by chance, things change significantly. Your capital improvements program, for example, the CIP, this number that we talked about here, I mean, that could change significantly from sometimes one year to the next, or within a couple of years. And we always say, you know, your CIP is not stagnant. It's kind of a living document, because it's going to change as your capital needs change, as your growth changes, if capital costs go up higher than engineers had anticipated, that kind of thing. So it's just a way to just make sure that, okay, yeah, we're still on track. And here again, it may not need to be annually, but maybe a little more frequently than the past.
Yes, while you're on page twenty-three, all of this stuff that we focus tonight, I would like all of us to, particularly, the district's office land, the regional cost, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Twice the cost of doing twice that, and just to keep that in mind, just to keep it in mind, that for a couple of months, to put the PSD to the vest of any real estate, any kind of real estate it owns. You know, we've run by a council pass, never to get rid of anything. And that's a very graphic reason why we should have, whether it be wastewater, new plant, or buy service in the inland, right?
I'm not convinced, but.
Thank you.
What I should caveat, this is just an adjustment based on engineering news record numbers. This is not an appraisal of that land. The actual land value could be way more than that even, or I can't imagine it'd be less. So I should say that, yeah. These are adjusted based on what we call E and R, engineering news record. There's other indexes out there, Handy Whitney and things like that. Like, in the past, it's been done based on E and R, so we stuck with that methodology, just for consistency purposes. So, yeah, so it's not an appraisal. It's just meant to show a reasonable expectation of the current value.
No, I'm good. I understand.
No, thank you.
I can understand exactly what you're doing, Nina.
Okay, good. Well, I'm glad.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we will not be shooting for July one increase if there is one granted and gone through the process. It would be a January one, because we can't get out the word by July one without the proper notification. The newness about this is that we did do a study in two thousand and sixteen, and we've traditionally done about one every three years, which is what CWS does here, work with us. So we don't have it in an MOU that you were talking about, but there has been kind of an unwritten agreement that we do about every three years. Fortunately, we're going to have a great model that they're providing to us, and we get to run that every year during the budget process, and it will let us know where kind of where we are. A January one would be the date of the process. If you look at the numbers when you go home, I notice that's the first thing you're going to do when you get home, is to sit down and read all this stuff. In doing so, you'll see the first year is a forty-six cents increase, second year is a... That's pretty insignificant, any of the increases we've done in the past. The thing I like about this, and it's done over five years also, where we've traditionally done it within two years or three years, it was a very hard hit on those individuals. But that keeps us in line, meeting our loan requirements. And what Dave's big issue has always been, since he's been here, is making sure that that system does not fail, that it's run so that we don't have who on the ground, and we are in compliance with the regulations. And I think he told him today, he came on board, he said he wanted to leave the system in better shape when he found it. And that's already, he's already succeeded in doing that. We're so far off from where we were before he came on board, so. Anyway, this is, I think, a great deal of good information. We will bring that back into the budget process during the wastewater side of it. May not recommend exactly this. I do have a stronger feeling on the impact fee, it's just my past experience of twenty years. We've been kind of cautionary about that for some reason, I don't know why the commission has been. Those are usually...
Commission, like, applying, this is, uh, this is that.
We have been turned down on both rates and impact fee changes in the past. The reason I'm saying this, these are the developers. These are people coming in, building houses and coming in. So what you're hitting is new customer base that's coming from wherever. And so it's not, it's built into the building of the home, it's built into their loans. And it's not like you're sitting out there, you know, hitting everybody up. We're not changing the people that we already sort of, these are new customers coming in, all over.
So this number down here, this eighty-three thousand dollars, that, we're running a deficit.
Yes.
And that's not good.
No, not that, it's not tremendous, but it's not...
Not tremendous, but to me, it's a lot. Yeah, my household was like that, I'd be in trouble. So that's not good.
No.
And but yet, the bottom line is, we're just increasing, everybody's not going to wait for, if they adopt this, by less than a dollar a month. So it's not...
And we're spreading it over five years.
We're spreading it out.
Over five years. Nine-nine cent for residential customer.
Well, because we're spreading it out, it makes a whole lot of sense. And I'd like to commend you on looking at five years rather than two years or one year. So that makes a difference.
Just remember when we're doing the budget, actual budget hearings, to remind us of what we just discussed.
We will definitely bring all that in.
Okay.
That'll be part of that Ways and Means Committee meeting, the last one.
You're right, with so much going on right now, January first, that's a good time to kind of creep that in there.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, you're very welcome.
This is a moral information for us to think about, so.
It is, it is.
We really appreciate it.
If you have questions, obviously, you know, your staff knows how to get in touch with us, or get our number from them.
We can find you.
You can find us. But, well, thank you again. I'm really happy, and we totally enjoyed working with staff of this project. And as we mentioned, it was in a condensed timeframe, but a lot of hard work by everybody made it happen.
Man, we appreciate you getting it done so well.
Michael and I were worried when we first left, after we came home for the first meeting. It's like, wow, are we going to be able to do this?
Well, I think what I like about this is almost self-explanatory. I think you guys did a real good job of putting your points across, so.
I didn't have some...
Can I finish, please? You did a good job with this, and you put it where we could really understand it. So I wanted to tell you, after twenty years, I appreciate it.
All right.
Yes, it is fantasticly detailed and just wonderful presentation. Thanks for all the information.
Well, I'm just going to stay here all night, like, I'll say good things.
You're amazing, yeah, thank you. So was there something you were about to say?
Yeah, I just said I had extra copies for any others that you might want to share with. I mean, get you some copies electronically, if you're interested in understanding the presentation, but that other stuff, you can do it on the project.
Say, say it back.
I was going to say, send that.
Okay, here we go. Item number eight, just a reminder.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much. Drive safely on the way back.
Oh, yeah, we will.
Thank you very much.
Next item is great, that you remind everybody that meeting is the new, to May the twentieth from the twenty-seventh, because of the holidays, so make sure you have that adjustment on your...
So was a motion already made, is that what you're saying?
No, it hasn't.
So somebody needs to make the motion to do this?
No, you agreed to it, but you never made a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind it.
Do we have a motion to officially move it?
I have a motion to officially move the meeting from May twenty-seventh to May twentieth, in light of the Memorial Day holiday weekend.
I second it.
Follow up. Any discussion? Yes, yes. I think it is commendable that we are showing the responsibility not to cancel meetings for the whole...
We agree with you.
We agree with you.
Call the votes?
Commissioner Ron Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Quintero?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman? Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Item number nine is committee and representative reports. And I will tell you that I'm going to have to do two comments in here, so. Mr. Platt, do you have any for administrative committee? All right, this is one of the comments that I have, and I have buyer's remorse. At the administrative committee, we voted that we were going to submit to the full commission, and it hasn't been done yet, to, for one of the three attorneys organizations that are put in for the general attorneys. And I've thought about it since that time. We only got three attorney organizations back when we committed this to the world, and I don't think three is enough to have a good idea as to who our attorneys would be. And with the commission's approval, I would like to reopen it and advertise it to, you know, we talked about it hadn't been advertised in what the law...
American Bar Association, Lawyers Weekly.
So I'd like to reopen it.
It was at the last minute.
Yeah.
Last couple of days before.
People didn't have enough time to respond to it. So I'd like to reopen this, not with any kind of notice against the three organizations.
So they're still in the running? You just don't get to get...
I just want to have more people, more organizations trying to see if they would like to be PSD general counsel. So with the commission's approval, instead of calling any one of the three in to sit and talk to it, number one, I want to reopen it. And number two, before we decide on any of them, I would like to have them kind of talk to the administrative committee, and so we can find out if we're a fit for whomever it is we're deciding on. So that's my motion, that we reopen the bidding process for the general attorneys.
That's your motion with the discussion?
Yeah, we'll start the process again, send up new RFQ request, and basically, do the whole process again. That's my motion, yes. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, any discussion?
You know, I think with all the stuff that we have going on, I object, I really do. I don't think we, I don't think we need to do this. We've got lots of other things that we should be putting our energy on. You know, redoing something to me doesn't make any sense. It's just my personal opinion, it don't make any sense to me. We had, we got three proposals, we need to go with that and just, I'm sorry, I'm not for...
That's okay.
Objection.
The reason that I would like to recommit, number one, we have not interviewed any of them, so we have no idea whether or not their corporate personality will fit with our corporate personality, number one. Number two, I don't know whether or not we've got enough people in to do a qualified sample. And number three, we really didn't talk to them right.
Well, I was, yes, I was going to say, I think that because of, you know, some of your, like, knowledge and what you were saying, you know, all these things, that, you know, it was last minute, you know, why it's just said, it just sounds like there's other ways to try and reach some groups, some, you know. Those are probably some of the best that we could possibly be choosing from, but perhaps it would be good, you know, it's not a last minute meeting.
Because everyone's not paid attention enough to jump on it in a timely manner. But, you know, I would be appreciative of having somebody be in that position that's got some background in dealing with a public service such as ours.
Rose.
And that's why, I trust, because they're...
Because the learning curve, I don't want to be, I don't want to be experienced about...
Rose is, huh? Yeah, with special...
Right, but see, and that's another thing, is because, that's why he opened up to the full committee, because there was such discussion about having it limited to the three at that time, and he guided it up to appease y'all, and now you don't want to open it up, I don't get it.
My thing is that if we had nothing else to do, I have no problem.
You know how important it is for a good qualified attorney?
We got a lot... We got a lot of stuff, can I finish, please? We got a lot of stuff that need to be taken care of to keep undoing things. It's time consuming and I'm, you know, I think that we need to look at some of the stuff. We got lots of things to be doing, we just don't have time to keep going back and forth.
If someone bring up the, nothing being undone, nothing being undone is added with it.
All right, all right, all right.
It's my opinion.
Call it.
I got an opinion and I, I'm gonna stick to my opinion.
Okay, fine. That's enough, thank you.
My opinion.
We got it, Mr. Platt.
I commend you, I think it takes some courage to publicly express buyer's remorse, buyer's remorse. I, I thought you were going to express remorse for your negative vote, larger resolution, anti-national one, but it wasn't. I'm still, am persuaded by your reason and prepared to uphold it.
Well, just again, as, as you were commenting, you know, your expertise is not going to take, you know, some grand mail for us to just try and get out the word and have a few more groups, because maybe no one else will come to us, that is possible. But it's not going to, I think we will still be able to address all of these necessary things without that being too much of our timetable. I mean, I just, you know, as long as, again, and perhaps if they do come for presentations, they would be also, you know, please make your presentation, you know, please don't make it a forty-five minute one. You know, you know, say, can you give us a twenty-minute, fifteen, you know, something.
I think we each got an opinion and that's my opinion.
Well, this was by-
Down, I don't care what, that's just my opinion.
We got it.
That's the great thing, we can all have opinions.
I wish James had left because he reviewed them, right? He looked them over, he gave us that little chart.
We just put it together.
That could be the little chart.
No, it was all done by the minister.
Oh, yeah.
You just physically put them on a list.
Okay, I didn't know we could do that, but, um.
Yeah, we were told not to do it, didn't we?
Oh, okay.
But I, I did, sorry.
Finish the sentence, I would like to hear.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I see, can you finish the sentence, because you were saying Maryland, but I would like to hear what you were, what you were saying about-
Yeah, I just was gonna say that we have an interim attorney that is very interested, he just missed seeing the deadline, so.
So we're doing it for him, okay?
Not just for him, it's for me.
Just for him, yeah.
Thank you, I wouldn't-
Right, right, right.
Okay. Right.
It can, it can parallel, you can open on the floor, you can still parallel, you can still be conducting the interviews and checking out the three that have submitted in the same timeframe, but you're, so we're not losing anything, or we're not, I mean, we're actually gaining. That you don't wanna have just some, we're talking about a turn here.
Can we set a deadline for this?
Well, it would be under the normal, it would be under the normal processes with, what, sixty days?
You still have to get to thirty days for it.
Right, thirty days for you to get back.
And a big Christmas before we get an attorney.
And now it needs to go back to the head.
Christmas or New Year's.
Okay. So this would end up, once we open up the qualitative, and RFQ again, open up the process again. The results are the respondents who go back to the administrative committee and hopefully will have more than three to make a decision. If we don't, if we only have three, that's cool, at least we'll know exactly who's interested in working for the PSD. But before we bring it out to the general commission, I would love to have an interview by each one, by whoever we narrow down to, say, the final three or something like that, inside administrative committee. To find out if these people actually do fit with the commission.
Little brown hand.
I see it, just hang on.
Little brown hand.
Wait your turn. So my suggestion is, since we, especially since we have a general, a temporary general attorney, who's doing a very good job, that we reopen the RFQ and, and the bidding process. Yes, ma'am?
When are we going to, we got other things we gotta do, when are we going to put out for, for the district manager?
That'll be the next thing I'm gonna be talking about.
Okay.
Just a clarification, that now the three firms that, that, that they were interested, hopefully they would not have to go through that again.
Right, right. We can let them know that they were reopening due to lack of responses or whatever. We'll have to sit down and figure out how we're gonna phrase it. But if they're still interested, they do not have to resubmit, so they're not being prejudiced against the process.
You have the motion she seconded, that was on the floor.
So, Ms. Platt, would you call quick?
Commissioner Ron Brown?
No.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelmann? Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Hi.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that was the only change that I had as far as the administrative committee report, if you wanna call it that. So we don't have to take any votes on this, does anybody have anything else for administrative? Okay, CIP, do we have a report on that?
It comes from me.
It comes from me.
All the workshops are Ways and Means Committee and Committee of the Old, Chair, by you.
I don't know about everybody else, but I kind of got a little shock of my own about the dollar value of what was being asked. And what was it, one point seven million as, as far as capital equipment and then another two hundred and fifty thousand, I think it was, for wastewater. So it ended up being about one point nine million of capital equipment. And I, I don't know, I don't know if we can afford-
Well, I think each department needs to prioritize, say, this is what I have to have. Maybe with the fire, it could be radios, and then maybe, well, that brush truck would be okay, but we could probably go another year. They need to prioritize, instead of us deciding that the brush truck is more important than radios, I'm just using that one because I remember it, but, um.
That was the information, was only for information purposes. We're in the process of reviewing.
Y'all are reviewing it.
All of it, prioritizing, looking at the replacement schedule, making decisions. And I've been asked to do a known tax increase budget by the chair, and he had two individuals that he said supported that, so.
Yeah, I, I, you know, yeah, I think we should-
That would be both on debt service and general, okay?
Well, that, that sounds good. Like I said, you're just gonna have to prioritize and see what you can really doubt, so.
Chairman of the Fire Committee. And we have, this year, we asked for a new fire truck that was put off. We were supposed to get it last year, what happened? We got a, a new fire truck and the telephone. So we can't, I'm, I'm, we could prioritize all we want, but then we keep putting things back and every year it costs more. So let's think about, I mean, you think you're saving on the one hand, and then on the other hand, you keep pushing things back, it is not helping. Every time we push back, it costs more, so keep that in mind. We are. We, you know, we talked, we was, the fire truck, we were supposed to get in the last year budget, what happened?
No funds.
No fund, we got property that's sitting there, that builds property, I'd like to see us, we could sell that property and pay for some of these things. Because it's just sitting there, lots and lots of animals I see running out of that place, so you're not doing anything with it. Sell it and pay for some of these capital things. We got the stuff over here by the church, the little, that's almost an acre of property, we can sell that. We got these things just sitting and then we're talking about what we don't have.
Let them, let them work through their budget.
I'm just saying, we need to get the budget submitted to us before we start making-
Okay, well, I'm just giving my opinion publicly, so you'll know I'm not selling for pushing back nothing for another year.
Allow Commissioner Brown to give her opinion, let me give you my opinion.
Okay.
We're not selling any property. Okay, we got it.
We both sell property to pay for whatever we need.
It doesn't get put on here as committee and PSD representative reports, but there's a comment that, it's just a comment from the last regular commission meeting. We did approval for the MOU with the town of James Island. And I just wanted to let the commission know that with the discussions back and forth, that this is a non-binding MOU. And since I've got the approval on it, I'm gonna go ahead and sign it and we can get the process started with the town. We've, we've got, I don't know, some hesitation coming from a couple of locations as far as changes. But since this is non-binding, I'm gonna go ahead and start it. And if, we can always cancel it at any given time if it looks like it's gonna be a, a problem. So it's just a notification and it's gonna be done.
Yes, the last hour, we're gonna get one, doesn't it, you know, and is that not going to happen?
We're still waiting on some answers back in the state and the county.
Oh, okay.
So we're gonna work with the original, with the starting rules, just like any other-
Yeah, you had several questions.
Any other program that we have.
They had some verbiage changes, right? But they said they were, they were not very significant, was that?
Well, it's like overtalking your point.
Right.
You know, you can say three sentences, get it done, but when you turn it into three paragraphs-
Try to make it more concise.
Right, and, exactly. So that's part of what's going on right now. And if we get it done, then at least we can put a little bit of pressure up, up the ladder instead of just sitting here waiting above the ladder. We can always cancel it if we don't like the answers. That's the reason it's a non-binding program.
Why aren't we waiting for something from this?
Yeah, I talked to both attorneys today, and both of them have, uh, they're waiting on something, so.
Waiting to make more money, is what it is.
Well, that could very well be.
Okay, will you finish that?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, unfinished business?
I would like to-
Where's the interment?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Ways and Means Committee. That was exactly the, what we talked about earlier. Again, this is- I didn't have any real report on it, other than fact that we've had a whole lot of money requests and- Anybody have anything else they want to say?
No, didn't want to, uh, contain a motion to approve.
Nope, sorry. Okay, no, this is just a report, this doesn't need an approval.
It's amended for a prior.
Well, even though it approved, can we make a correction? Item five, I don't think that I adjourned the meeting.
Thank you.
Item five, Ways and Means Committee, okay, April eleventh. Item five, the bottom, Mr. Platt adjourned the meeting at seven fifty-eight. Was that you who adjourned the meeting?
We can go back.
Oh, that was when we came-
We can go back to the tapes and confirm.
You made the motion, you made, oh, you, okay, I see what you're saying. Item number four, you made the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Right.
And the rule call won't be taken, okay. Item number five should read that I adjourned the meeting, yes, thank you.
Al, would you miss that? Mr. Chairman, you missed that.
Got that?
Got it.
Unfinished business?
I would like to, in lieu of that situation with the fire chief, I would like to suggest to, I'm as you say, fire person, to have a meeting on April twenty-ninth to resolve the issues. You're the fire committee person, right? I'm just suggesting to you that you should, if you wanna have a meeting, it's a good time to announce it.
Do I get any, any?
Okay, let's hear your input.
I just received a request at four o'clock today and I had a chance to respond.
Well, it seems like, uh, uh, okay.
Okay, so when are you gonna respond? You said you didn't have a chance to respond, so.
Well, I didn't really fit this meeting at four o'clock.
I guess we'll be tomorrow.
Well, Eva, you tell us when you're gonna respond, we can have a meeting. I mean, you know, the choice is yours.
Al, just for clarification, so what the chief was saying is that if the description is not changed, you're going to have to go out under FMLA because it's not-
First of all, I would never talk about a personal matter or mention FMLA about any person at all. It's inappropriate, it's almost forbidden from a HIPAA standpoint, he describes his own illness, so. I, I don't think that this is the forum to do that, and I have not had an opportunity to respond.
Is one so-called clarification?
At four o'clock.
Okay, my, my point, being the chairman of the fire committee, my point is, when are you gonna get to that? Would you tell me so I can have some idea and that I won't have to do anything?
Miss him, ma'am.
Well, I'm waiting.
I'm giving you a chance. Chairman, go ahead.
I was gonna address it to him.
Okay, so you gave me my answer that I was looking for, you'll, you'll do it tomorrow, so, um, okay.
Finished business? Any additions? None? Correspondence? None? Any additional, oh, yeah, I have two announcements, I wanna make sure of. And Christmas this Saturday is James Island, Taste of James Island at, at Forest Doctor's Field at the end of George Griffiths, where it joins into the river. What is it, eleven to three?
Yep.
Eleven to three, so everybody's invited, and they changed it this year a little bit, so instead of non-pachable food, they won't have, I think it's a five-dollar donation.
They're doing both.
Both?
Both, okay.
It takes bigger than money.
Neither or.
Yeah, what agenda item are we on? What agenda item were you with?
It's not, it's, it's an announcement, we should, we should have an announcement. So it would be item thirteen point five, or fourteen, whichever one you want to call it.
It makes it a little difficult for our following agenda and putting it on the agenda.
Sorry about that.
Well, wouldn't it be twelve, because it's like a news-related announcement?
Okay. And the other thing is, is just remind everybody that the James Island Expo, Hurricane Expo is in the newsletter. So everybody's invited to that, because again, the fire department and the PSD are gonna be represented there.
How long are you doing this thirteen, did you do thirteen, oral and written?
Yes, it is, nobody signed up.
Nobody signed.
So, uh, I hear most-
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
That was a small question, Mr. Platt, was it, you want to take a motion to adjourn?
Call, roll call.
Commissioner Ron Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelmann? Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Hi.
Commissioner Poston?
Don't sell property.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I call for, I adjourned the meeting.
Mr. Poston, I need you to sign something, I think you're gonna-